All our meeting to order on May 11th at 7:04 because we just rise for the Pledge of Legions. And we'll have Garrett start us off.
Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America, to which stands one nation, indivisible.
So we'll start off with our acknowledgements. So Dr. Willett, if you want to start us off.
Yes, we have. So we got a lot to say. So just to start us off, we do have Ms. Bridge and Decca. They have done so many wonderful things, as you know, but most recently we were in Georgia, right?
Yes.
And they took home just about everything Georgia had to offer and the Decca, of course, as you saw on the Facebook site and everything. So I don't want to take too much thunder away here. I want to hand it off to Ms. Bridge, but Decca has, Ms. Bridge's students' leadership always been strong, you know, strong presence in our school, doing so many great things. That it's no surprise that they went to Georgia and cleaned up down there. So. Yes.
Move.
So my name is Lynn Bridge. I'm a teacher at Tallinn High School. I've been there 11 years. We've been doing Decca for 10 years and we've been able to start up this club and grow it into a powerhouse that I'd like to say that we are now. We have done very, very well year after year, as Jaden knows, as a former state Decca president. And I brought with me my assistant, Lori Nesbit, who's been helping me out for the last couple of years. And she's been doing a wonderful job just trying to keep track of all of these students. Right before COVID, I'd like to tell you, we had 150 students in the club. 150. After school, every week, every Thursday, we meet. That's bigger than all of the clubs together. All that's a rest team. So we have 150, yeah. COVID obviously took a bite out of everybody, but we did have 80 during the COVID years. And now we've lost two good years of in-person competition because our students have had to compete virtually for the last two years, which is not really that exciting. So we've done it. We had 50 members this year. Out of the 50, 43 competed at the state level. We ended up with more than half, I think it was about 27, were state finalists, meaning in the top six. And we did take 17 students to Atlanta, Georgia for the in-person national competition. So it really was quite an event, not only to make it that far to the national level, but also to get out of Tallinn. So it was very exciting to take some of my students with me. It was great to be able to do this in person. I think you were in Atlanta, weren't you?
Yeah.
Yes, I do remember. So Atlanta is something else. Let me tell you, we had a great experience. We spent four days there. We did get to see the Olympic Park. We did compete. We were at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium for opening ceremonies. We had our competition in the Giant Convention Center. It was a little bit of an eye-opener coming from Tallinn to have so much traffic and hubbub and just craziness. There might have been a few, you know, incidences that Atlanta brings with it, with being in the center of city, but not with our students, but with just being in a city environment again. So it was interesting to be able to talk about that and see how things go along and progress and having to work with all sorts of different people from all over. We did have different nationalities there as well. They did travel, so that was great, too. So this year, we had a number of students, like I said, 17 of them, that made it to the national competition. I brought with me a list. I'd like to introduce them. And I have eight seniors with me, and I would like them to say where they're going to college and what they're going to major in, which I think would be great. So if I start with Garrett, Garrett's a sophomore. He competed. Stand up, Garrett. Garrett competed in automotive services marketing, came in second place in the state. Next up, I have Cal Susie, who was in sports and entertainment marketing, four-time first-place winner at the state level. He also traveled with me to Atlanta this year. He is a senior. What college and what are you majoring in?
I committed to Bentley and I'm going there for marketing, but that might change, as you all know.
Thank you. Alrighty, so next up, some other students. We have Andrew Singer in marketing communications and Jude Reagan in apparel and accessories marketing. We've got, both of them are juniors, and Jude Reagan is the secretary for state Decca this year and is expected to be an officer again next year for the state of Connecticut. We've got Sam Nusbaum. He is a junior in business finance. Competed. And Sam is also just won an award for the Smith Club as well, the Student Managed Investment Fund. He competed with Young Investor Society while he was down there with me, competing Decca during the day and Smith at night. So. I've got a new Decca member who's a senior who happened to be sitting in my classroom, and I twisted his arm a little bit. Lo and behold, he gets first place. I've got him with me in Nationals, Cam Mccluskey, in personal financial literacy. Thank you, Cam. And the next person we have is Ian Corr. He competed in business services marketing. This is your third time making it to Nationals to compete.
Fourth.
Fourth time. And he is Connecticut Decca State President. He just finished up his term.
I just recently committed to Bryan for politics and legal studies.
Next up, we had Chase Superior and Nate Pulis. One of them are here this evening, and they competed for the school store, a school-based enterprise, which was pretty awesome that we were able to compete this first time. We've actually competed in that category. However, we are on our third year of being gold certified by Decca, so that's pretty exciting for us for the school store. Will Peter is here. He competed in business law and ethics team decision-making. Will?
I'll be studying biology at University of Notre Dame.
Yep. Will's partner for business law and ethics is Abe Coley.
I'm going to UConn for material sciences and engineering.
We also had a team in travel and tourism team decision-making. And one of the members is here tonight, and that is Erin Deffley.
I'm going to Matt Holley College and I'm majoring in anthropology.
We just recently got our scores back from the national competition, and we have never seen this high on a test for an arrogant 95 on her national test.
I average like a 60.
Okay, we don't need that in minutes.
We have the team of Francesca Bonbar and Maddie Satava. And Francesca is here tonight for marketing management team decision-making.
I'm going to Providence College and I'm currently in the society of probably being more towards marketing.
And then last and certainly not least, we have Lindsay Jones, who competed in human resources and management, made it to the national stage as role-play medalist, and competed as a finalist, top 20 in the world.
I'm going for their honors program at the University of Tennessee Society. I'll be majoring in business.
Fantastic for the students. And I would like to say it was my pleasure to travel with all of them. They were fantastic. Really just great students, fun to be around. It was great to, you know, be able to do some things outside of Tallinn, get to see the sights, and we just really had a good time.
I gotta be honest, I think they deserve a C and A.
That is awesome. That is. I know in the past, and you don't need to do this, but sometimes the students have said kind of what this experience meant to them. Did you want to hear from a representative?
Absolutely.
Or just what Decca has meant to them. I'm all yours. So I'm going to start with our Decca president, Ian Corr. He's like really missing.
Are you going up there?
Yes, you are.
You have to come and speak to the owl if I was. Steve, then you get to go on the fancy.
Oh, wow. Very cool. So I've been a member of Decca for four years, as can many of the other students who made it to Atlanta, as I say. And I'm sure every person who's a member of the club, Jane will know. It really does change your life. It makes you see yourself and everyone around you, hold it perspective. It reveals to you more of your personality than you thought you knew. You can discover what you want to do as a major, what you like. I discovered I do not want to major in business, and that I wanted to go into more of the legal and political side of the club, which I tried to fulfill with my time in the club. And I really think that the most important thing that you will learn is the friendship, is how to talk to other people, how to connect to other people, and the friendships that you'll make throughout that time. Many of the people here, I can say that they're some of my best friends, and that I didn't know many of them before I or themselves joined the club, but I feel like I will stay in touch with them for past college and throughout the rest of my life. So I really can't speak more to it than, any more than I already have. Just know where I am. Alright, so as you guys know, I'm definitely pursuing career in business, you know, based off the college in my major. And kind of on the flip side of what Ian said, Decca kind of defined that for me. You know, I was coming out of, it's weird to say because like I'm only in high school, but I was coming out of middle school, you know, thinking that I was going to do something in law, you know, legal, because, you know, I really like to argue with my parents. But that all changed once I hit high school. You know, joining Decca and seeing Ms. Bridge and seeing, you know, what networking can do, it just pushed me into this place where that's the only thing that I can do now. You know, I even took a job. I'm currently working at a law firm in Vernon, but that's just not what I want to do. And Decca has just trumped all of that in all my experiences. And obviously, like what Ian said, I formed some, you know, lasting friendships here, and I would do it all over again.
So like most everybody else here, like Ian said, I've been a Decca for four years, and I've actually stayed in my category for those four years, which I know is kind of weird for Decca, but I really loved when I did marketing management team decision-making. My partner is not here right now, but basically what everybody else just said, I met some of my greatest friends here and really learned that business is probably one of my main aspirations. Again, I'm not exactly sure, but my time here working with role-playing and coming with marketing plans has been really fun and a really creative way for me to think outside of the box in a business sense. So I've really enjoyed my time here and meeting all of these wonderful people. And yeah, I would definitely recommend Decca to a friend that enjoys business.
Hello. So I originally joined Decca my junior year, so I've always been a two-year member. I joined it because I was part of Mrs. Bridge's marketing class, and I really enjoyed being a student of hers, and I also enjoyed marketing. So last year, I competed as a state competitor, as a marketing, principles of marketing competitor. And I placed at states. I really enjoyed the experience. And then I really learned that I loved sort of the more connecting and networking aspect of business. So I decided to go into human resources management. And I think this year, competing in that category really taught me that business encompasses almost every field that you can go within for a career. Although I personally don't want to pursue a career in particularly business, I do think it's an important attribute of any career you decide to go into. And Decca has really taught me that and sort of emphasized how important it is to learn how to make connections, how to understand policies, and sort of legal concepts in order to really thrive at the career that you decide to pursue. So Decca really taught me, you know, how to make important connections and also how to speak well and eloquently in front of others. And I don't think I would have had as great of an experience in high school as I've had without Decca. It really taught me so many meaningful things.
The rest of them are tongue-tied. Well, thank you to those who could speak. That was fantastic. Like I said, you guys are an inspiration, especially for other, you know, we just had, I'm sure the tours are coming up for the high schoolers coming in, the middle schoolers seeing high school. So I'm sure your experiences would help them maybe sway them into going to Decca. Trying to get my son to do it, but you know, that was a no-go. I think it is great enough. Like I did ask you a lot of questions about it, and I still couldn't get him to do it. I think it's a wonderful, what is it, activity club, however you want to call it, because you are still making your friendships. You are still, you know, there's so many pieces of a puzzle that are put together with Decca. And like I said, you guys are, this is fantastic. That's such an accomplishment. I'm very excited for you and for our time.
Can I just say really quickly?
Absolutely.
A lot of them were freshmen when I was a senior, I believe. But Mrs. Bridge and Ms. Nesbit, sitting next to her, I mean, those are two very, 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 very hardworking individuals. And a lot of these students, they worked for it. They earned the credit for their success all the way up to this point. But I think they would all agree that Mrs. Bridge is a huge part of that. And I can attest to that for my own personal sake. And so this program, to even have 50 members coming out of a pandemic, that's really special. And you guys did that. And so, Mrs. Bridge, thank you. Decca students, thank you. Ms. Nesbit, thank you. This, I don't think I've smiled this much in a whole board of ed meeting, the entire meeting, never mind the first 10 minutes. So this is like one of my best days ever. So.
We're gonna get that 150.
Yeah, we're gonna get that back to that 150 absolutely in no time. But truly impressive. This was, I'm speechless now.
But it does impact such like your future, what you want to do, your friendships. I mean, there's so much that goes into it.
And there's a lot of different avenues, too. And so I won't get into a, you know, proposed decade at everybody here, but the decade is awesome.
Yeah, we love you, too.
Okay, did we have anything or what was?
It was just admiration and lauding of all of the hard work.
Which is fantastic. I accept.
Now codified through the owl in video for ever and ever.
The other acknowledgements for tonight would be our bulletin board. And finally have, if you can see in the back wall there, this is something that's been undergoing for about three years, along with Tami and Steve Jones. We've been working on this, trying to get some artwork. And obviously, COVID kind of threw a little wrench into the works, but we are supposed to have town residents as well for their artwork to be displayed. So it's kind of a joint venture.
Yeah.
So this is our first month that we have noticed on here. So I don't know if you have any lists that we can kind of just.
I do. So these, I think people can see it, but I'm gonna stop for sure. You sure, just to make sure. So this is, this is a list of all of the young talents that we are benefiting from their art today. So it's a little hard to see, but this comes from Zach's class mostly, but you can see in this rows. But you can see, you know, these, the amazing stuff they're doing. Some of it is actually pointing, like there's one over there, I think, that looks a little bit like art to me, but it's beautiful. I saw that one. So, you know, but it's really cool, and they do an amazing job. And so every month, we'll be highlighting different young adults' artwork here.
Which is even great that, not to be mean, but the town council doesn't have any residents to go out and work, because obviously we have an overflow over here. So, I mean, this is great. And I love that I can look and see artwork instead of the old painting that was back there. That was very one-day. So thank you very much to our artists that we have displayed for our first month. And then, just like you said, we'll do this as monthly comes through. This is all high school, correct?
Yeah, and the next group will be in June.
For middle school? School of next. Were we moving the? Leadership awards, are we keeping it where we are? Are we?
Whatever your feeling is on that, but you could roll right into it if you'd like.
Well, we just have to approve the agenda first.
Yep.
Just because that way we can have all of our acknowledgements done at first. So that's our next order is approval of the agenda. So I would like to move the L1, not L1, I want to, let's just move it up to, I just do, make it a C2, I guess. Can I do that? C2? Yeah.
Sure.
It's not really, okay. And so I'd like to do that if anyone wants to. For the key student leadership awards, move it up into C2, just so that we can have all of the acknowledgements.
Move, that we move the Cade Student Leadership Awards up to C2. I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion on that? Do you have any forum members that would like anything to say? If not, we can do a vote. So Jaden? And we have Dina on here. Great.
Bye.
And Ford? Ford just might not be available at this time. And I, so we will, let's move into our key leadership awards, which already vote. And obviously, we don't have Ford's vote, but.
So Lindsay? Lindsay Jones?
Yeah.
Right in the back. Yeah. So Lindsay is our first Cave Award recipient, and we do have a certificate for you, Zeta, along with all the other ones. Mr. Pullman did want to come here tonight, but he had a family situation, so he was unable to attend. But he does want to make sure that we give the credit that is due to our Cave honorees tonight. So I'm gonna read a narrative, then I have a certificate for you. Words, Cam, no pressure. But Lindsay is a senior at Tallinn High School. She is dependable, diligent, an amazing young lady who has served as the president of the class 2022. She's secretary of the Health Sciences Club, captain of the cross-country team, president of Decca, and president of the National Honor Society. Lindsay has worked hard in the classroom, and as a result of her hard work, she is ranked in the top tier of her class. Additionally, she has also won the Award of Excellence in both health studies in 2019 and marketing, which we'll go about 2021. Lastly, but not least, she was on the Assistant Principal Interview Committee. She was a member of the Tallinn Greater Together Community Fund Advisory Grant Committee, and recently at the Decca National Competition. As you heard, she qualified as international finalist in human resources, and she told us all about that. So please join me in congratulating Lindsay Jones, 2022 recipient of the Cave Student Leadership Award.
Thank you very much.
If you, if you want, you can take a better picture with Dr. Willett. Yeah, move out of the way. You guys can take a nice photo.
You both have everything well. Thank you.
Little the owl and everything, too. The other will get a very good picture.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'll bring up an idea, too. I mean, we should have Decca here with Dr. Willett and take a nice picture. If you guys were up for that.
Yes.
I see a lot of smiles from the kids.
Good news, I'm the shortest. The owl, I know it's intimidating, but it will not hurt you.
Ready? Sam, or, yeah, like slightly this way.
Just like last time.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome sauce.
Thank you.
Mr. Willett, thank you for bringing a drive-through at Donkey's.
Oh, yeah. I forgot. I needed that myself. Thank you, guys. You are great.
By Mrs. Bridge.
Yes, we have a Cave Honorary. We do have one for you. They are here, Mr. Ricardone. So we do have another Cave Honorary. And I want to just acknowledge that Emerson, Emerson, I'm sorry that everybody left. As a whole Decca crew, what Emerson, you are going to be seen by the world. Okay? This is the CBC world here. So Emerson, Ricardone is a senior at Tallinn High School, and through his creativity and his videography skills, he has been able to consistently capture memorable moments of the Eagle Experience over the course of four years. And, you know, it's an incredible talent to be able to do that and do it in a compelling way. Emerson builds relationships with all members of the school community, and by doing so, he helps foster a truly welcoming environment. Additionally, Emerson is a top scholar, in addition to being a National Honor Society Officer and a peer mentor. He volunteers as a mentor to students with special needs and works with the Best Buddies Program, Top Soccer, and All-Star Bowling. He is also content creator for the CIAC and Team Spartans Basketball. Additionally, he is captain of the lacrosse team. Please join me in congratulating Emerson Ricardone for the 2022 recipient of the Cave Student Leadership Award.
When you walk on away, you have to do a nice picture.
Thank you so much.
Can you do some videos for us?
Sure.
I'd love to. Alright, bringing them in.
Alright, bringing them in.
Have a good night, thank you.
That's what I'm saying, that's why we have to put that going. Okay, so moving on, so approval of the minutes, I mentioned in the motion to approve the April twenty-seventh minutes.
We approve the April twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two minutes.
Any discussion on that? Do we have any issues, any problems? Not, let's go ahead and. So let's go ahead. Christina? Dana?
Hi.
As well, therefore, minutes are approved as is. Okay, let's move to public participation. If we could, um, please list your name and address for the record. You'll be given two minutes. To speak about what, whatever you would like, and then. That's about it, okay? My screen just keeps on moving.
That's because I gotta do the time.
I know, but it's like I can't get my listing of people, so I don't know, like I can't see Ford, Dana, I just. Okay, so once you get your timer ready and shared.
Sorry, every time I take it down to put something else up, it'll switch you off.
Yeah, but it's just not. Yep, Heather, you just gotta press unmute and then you're good to go. List your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now, sorry? Hi, Heather McCann, sixty-two Crossman Drive. Um, this is a comment of appreciation. In the last week or so, I received an email regarding my intent to send my son to E S Y again this year. My son has been in E S Y program since he was four years old or kindergarten, um, and he is now going to be. He's finishing off his fifth grade year. I'm very thankful for this program. It has been monumental for my son's continuity of learning and many others. Extended school year programs are designed around the individual student's needs, so each student's experience and teaching is unique to them. For example, a social behavioral impairment that interferes with one's learning can be discreetly addressed while wrapped up in a fun activity. For another student with a learning disability, it may look more like a one-on-one tutoring session, or it may not. Creatively, they teach our children and support them while utilizing mitigating strategies to support the continuity in their I E P and educational goals. I'm very thankful for Superintendent Willet, for Patty Hess, Director of People's Services, the entire special education team, the Paris Specialist Elite Team. And all the educators involved on a daily basis in supporting all of our children. Thank you for recognizing that our children are more than a number.
Thank you, Heather. At this time, would anyone else like to speak? Please raise your hand. Going once, going twice. Okay, we will close out the public participation correspondence. Um, Jacob is not here and he did not send me one, so let's go to points of information. Does any board member have anything that they would like to say?
We should do that more often.
I'm trying, I'm trying, okay? Anyone else? Okay. Uh, student representatives, hi ladies!
Hi. So spring starts, spring spr- wow. Spring sports have started as well as next week on Friday, the twentieth is prom. We have step-up day for intruders, I think it was last week, so um, both Wednesday and Friday they were there. And then all of next week, we're running our prom safety week, so we're having guest speakers come in just to promote um, safe driving and. Yeah. I think that's all.
Guys excited about prom?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I go to? Thank you ladies.
Okay, so let's go ahead and jump into the monthly financial report.
Alright, um, so as you know, actually.
See that, usually my screen, like I can get everything working, it's just not popping in, like, I don't know.
Yeah.
Something's weird.
Alright, so as you know, every month, uh, first meeting of the month, we review the monthly financial report. This month, I'll give you a couple of highlights and um, and then just kinda open it up. Get questions, respond as best I can or get them and uh, return that information at next meeting. Uh, salaries are currently under budget by about two thirty-six to um, you know, to uh, some of the things that have gone on with the pandemic. Relative to um, you know, hiring and filling positions. And so, right now, it's kinda where we had expected to be, given those considerations. Substitutes, code one twenty, the available balance is seventy-two, under budget with a few months remaining. Um, it's been down a bit, um, and as we continue to finish up in May and June, uh, we still have a lot of COVID effects. So um, you know, we have people that uh, we have to bring in for that, and that usually hits in this line. Um, so we do expect that to continue. Overtime expenses, uh, those can't be encumbered, currently under twenty-four K. Uh, but again, in a similar way, we are still, you know, incurring that, so we have two months more of experience and that should bring that down a bit. The stipends, which is code fifty, are currently under, I'm sorry, currently over. You know, they are usually related to pay-to-play and those are being collected, and as you know, we've talked about that in the past. Health insurance, employee benefits, two-ten, um, also two hundred and one ninety are collectively under. Teachers are still in the process of um, you know, incurring certain things with time severance, so we'll probably see that. Um, we'll potentially see that in the next month or two, but, but not a lot are gonna be notifying us at this point, so that might stay close to what it is. You know, retirement, of course, reimbursement, unemployment, typically they're all collectively under budget. In April, but uh, we will see some of that again, kind of reduce as the year goes on or finishes. Benefits consultant, workers' comp balances, two seventy-three, ten, uh, both under, yeah, as of April. Now, three twenty professional services are over, due mostly to special education. Um, occupational therapy, physical therapy, audiological, psychological, speech behavioral and consultation needs of students. Um, so that is collectively over by about one eighty-four. Legal audit and tech service. Three forty-three, fifty are collectively under by twelve, but um, expenses on these will continue and we're about to enter into negotiations. So we're starting to incur some negotiations costs, so that, um, even though we are collectively under in those areas, we're probably going to. You know, to balance that. Maybe go a little over. All repair, maintenance, custodial, cleaning, all technical expenses for twenty-four, thirty will continue to be spent. Um, they're currently under right now, but uh, again, we have two months more experience to have. Transportation is over, as we've talked about before, uh, generally this is because we have um, some special education needs. That we have to address. And we did talk about that, the overage. It's gonna be a part of the picture for the end of the year. Tuitions in a similar manner are over, again. This is something that we have talked about and it continues to be a factor for the budget this year. Yusuf, uh, energy was transferred at the beginning, one point four million textbooks have been fully expended. And you know, there may be a little remaining there, but we do expect to spend the rest of that. Instructional supplies, uh, equipment miscellaneous, which is generally lined six hundred, six-ten, six-ninety, seven-thirty, are collectively under at this time. Um, but that'll probably balance out as well. Overall, um, you'll notice last month we were a bit negative, but this month. We are now in a space of about fifty-nine thousand. And you know, that, that doesn't instill some of the occurrences, things like that, that we need to get to the end of the year. We are in a process of uh, talking to entities like the bus company to see what may be recovered. At the end of this year too, we're working every angle we can to make sure that we have the budget here. Um, in, you know, above the line, and I, I firmly believe that we will. Um, and so in FFC meeting that's coming up and a few other opportunities, we'll, we'll be able to talk about where that looks like it's going to land. And when we talk about the budget, we'll talk a little bit about that too. So I think uh, in some other communications and conversations we're having, we, we might actually be able to do a few, not a lot. And I'm not quite sure yet, but a few end-of-year expenditures. That the, the board may entertain, which again, that conversation will be coming up next. But that's, that's in, in process, so I don't have a, an actual thing to report on that, but maybe by the time FFC comes up next week. To report, to, you know, at that, and then ensure.
When you were talking about transportation. I think I asked you this on the way, um, the contract to start thinking about all that is summertime?
Yeah, the contract expires in June of twenty-three, so we begin that process this summer. I'll be contacting board members involved or who wants to be involved, and we'll be doing that in the next few months. We have a very busy few months, we have custodians right away, but we have teachers and administrators that will be a very large part of August. Because the timeline this year has, um, that meeting to be complete basically early September. And we can't start until they tell us we can start, and we have to end when they tell us we have to go to, yeah, go to mediation or arbitration. So literally, it will open up the third or fourth week in July and it closes in the very first or so week of September. So August will probably be taken up almost entirely by teacher and admin negotiations, because they are the biggest. And then, once we get out of that, we'll probably be able to go right into transport, September, October, and we'll go from there.
Jaden?
Just really quickly, Dr. Will, there's a lot of information coming from a lot of different places about what it means to end above the line. Can you just go into that a little bit? What does it mean to at the end of this fiscal year, we are above the line? What does that mean? Where does that go?
Well, we, we never want to be below zero. In other words, we wanna be able to make sure that we haven't over expended. So above the line means, right now you'll notice our, our balance is fifty-nine, three-one-seven, uh, ten thousand, three hundred and seventeen. We don't wanna be in the negative on that number, we wanna always be above that. In the, in the past, as a trend, the board has typically been somewhere below a hundred thousand. And then we had a couple of years where it was much higher than that, state budget crisis years, COVID years. Uh, but we're, we're returning to that time of that type of trend. We're, we're likely gonna be below a hundred at the end of this year, um, and that's generally what you might expect. And so, you know, that's where I think we're going to land, but we would not wanna be over expended. The board under, you know, ten, two-twenty-two has the obligation, an requirement to spend for education, what's allocated to it. Going over that can happen, if it does, you, you, you typically have to go to the town and ask. We, I don't anticipate that being the situation here. And the Board of Ed under the state of Connecticut is given uh, the privilege of having an educational reserve fund. Should a town be willing to, you know, codify that, and Tallent did. So the Board of Ed, in its wisdom here, has put away money in the educational reserve fund for a rainy day. Your biggest rainy days, most impactful ones are typically special education. And so that is really what we're noticing here, and we're not alone, and COVID has hit us pretty hard. We have doubled the number of identifications for special education in the, um, going elementary. And these are all things that are part of coming off the pandemic, you know, we may be done with it, but it is not done with us in a number of ways. So um, so we're seeing that budget-wise. And the educational reserve fund is where you can go as a board to cover any over expenditures. That might hit us with special education. And so I don't anticipate your, any of you having an issue here, we won't go negative. But um, that's why you have a rainy day, like in E R F, because you can't predict what will happen. No one's really predict COVID or the impacts of COVID really, and so that'll help us. So we will um, not go negative. That would be highly undesirable if you did, and a board would have to account to.
And so when, but would, say there's fifty-nine thousand dollars, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventeen eighty-three cents left in the bank. This is now end of June, what happens?
As of the last day of June, that gets transferred to the town's general fund. Once the audit is complete, usually in the third quarter, the board can request that any amount up to one percent. Which is how the E R F works, can be transferred to your educational reserve fund. So that fifty-nine thousand, you could make the request that the town council transfer that to the board's educational reserve fund. Up to, and let's say you had a forty thousand dollar budget, one percent of that, you know, it's going to be that four hundred. So that can be transferred up to that. In this case, you could ask, we would like that fifty-nine thousand, because it's below one percent of your budget to be transferred.
Let's go to the floor.
Thank you. Is, is Griffin there? I can't see on my tiny little screen.
I'm here.
You are. Okay, I was gonna put you on the spot for a couple of questions, you don't have to answer now, but maybe in FFC. I'm looking, I'm looking at the salary overages and the stipends. I think I've sent you before a couple examples of budgets from other districts, how they break down uh, the salaries and stipends by position. Uh, I'd love to see that moving into the future, um, just to provide better, you know. Just to be a little bit more clear about why, um. Over the past seven years, there's, you know, been one point four million uh, overages in salary. So that's uh, where I'm going with that. Um, my other question would be professional education services, we're over there. Is there anything in there that, um, in that one hundred and eighty-four services that are over twenty thousand? Uh, I'd like to see those things start coming to the board for approval, uh, according to our purchasing policy. I think that was it for the overages, and then a question, or actually, um, some accolades on the transportation. Uh, just because of the service we've seen recently, I'm glad that we might be able to get some concessions there, if at all possible. So, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, I wrote it down.
I, I won't spam you.
Anyone else at this time? Everyone looks good, and Griffin's busy writing, so let's go ahead and move on to the budget.
Alright, so as you know, um, to give you a little run-up to the scenario and the situation. A town council did reduce the Board of Education budget as the referendum was to, um, defeated. The reduction to the Board of Education budget was three of two eight seventy-one. Brings you down to about a two-point-two percent. This document that I made available to the board, um, and I'll post it um, to the Board of Education. To the Tallent Public School Budget Site after tonight, uh, but I did wanna get, you know, the board's feedback, put it in front of the board first. Um, and it was generated for tonight, as, as you know. So this document illustrates how I think you can get there. Essentially, the issue that we face is that a three-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar reduction is a very hard reduction to hit. With program items. Also, as a reminder, this, I think, is up there, but I'll also put it up. There's been three reduction really cycles already. These are the earlier reductions that you made to get to your three-one-three, so there are, there are things we already took. So I can't go back to the, obviously, we can't go back and take anything we've already done. Then the town manager's reduction, in which case we took from OPEB, audit, unemployment, custodial, once again, I can't miss, go back to these. And so what I tried to do is, if you recall, when I presented you some things to reduce, early on, the board made some adjustments. Um, I'm putting those back on the table at this point, because this was uh, generated from meetings I had with staff. About, you know, could we, you know, rob here to pay a home call here, can we do something else here, can we do something else here? And this is what I came up with back in February, end of January, February, or whatever, when we went through that original cycle to get to the three-one-three. So these are things you did not select, um, and some other things that I went back to the drawing. So these are things you did not select, and some other things that I went back to the drawing board and tried to pull. So you'll notice, and I'll try to blow this up, but board members, you have access, and this will be posted tonight. It's weird about how I, I try to hit the plus and it just kind of vibrates here, but let me see if I can. So those of you at home, hopefully you can see when I see the expansion of this. So there were four positions in order to get to three oh two. I, I don't, it's very difficult to get there and have those positions. So those positions are part of the reduction. Then everything else that we could try to squeak out of, some plumbing, some rigging, some architect fees, appliances, duct cleaning, locker parts, calf tables, an additional piece to Medicare, because that's what these positions were going to generate. And I tried to take into account things that I know that you have talked about in general. Like, can you do anything else with repair and maintenance? Can you do anything else with supplies? You know, can you do anything else with some of these other areas? So, um, so this is trying to give a nod to every piece of conversations that people have had about this. And ultimately, when we get down to the end, you'll notice that we also address special education, which is something that people have thrown out there, too. So the total that I got to was three oh two eight ninety-one, but this is what's required to get there. And, and, and keep in mind that, again, there are things we can't go back to do because we did them already. So we have already made reductions to OPEB and pensions, to audit, to unemployment. We've also gone to custodial supplies and, um, you know, you'll recall from the earlier cycle on the process. And I have tried to dip in again, our CT said special education training for the new software that has been out early on. We already made a health insurance adjustment, two hundred thousand. You know, we have some of these other things that you'll notice in here that are different from what I have, but they have some similar names. We took away from bike and postage and course reimbursements and workers' comp and furniture and fixtures. We moved some other items to, as you remember, ERF usage, pre-investment on getting tech initiative items. Literacy how also is taken out earlier, the Yukon training. So at this point, a lot of things, special ed training, Yukon training, literacy how, the devices, the Medicare, the Medicaid, the postage, pensions, the OPEB, uh, workers' comp, all of that. Um, so really, this was what I could get. You know, this is where I had to go. And so you don't lose, no person right now loses their job with this reduction. It's just the positions that were being recommended. Oh, there is one exception to that. The counselor that was funded by grant, we will go down by a counselor at the middle school. There'll be two rather than the three, because we were funding that third grant, but we were some time back. So that, that ended. That's where it's getting picked up. So that, that, but no person is actually losing it because that person's. So what it does is it keeps everybody who has a job in a job, and reduces the things that I recommended in the past, also goes above and beyond that to, to give a nod to things people had mentioned and were, I was hearing them talk about. Takes out that seventy-five from special ed. That would probably, we would try to do some prepayment on that if we could, if we had some money, because that is autism. This particular thing is autism training. Um, and it's not a one-time thing. It's a person who comes in and does work with our people throughout the year multiple times. So I would want to move that off to a pre, you know, pre-investment type thing if that opportunity came up. But, um, and, and again, a lot of these could be pre-investments if we had funds, but we're not in a position to say, like we have been in the last few years, that those funds will absolutely be there. So I can't, I can't, I don't want to label that as a pre-investment when we don't really have any mechanism right now for doing that. As I said, I am working to try to reconcile and get some money back for the board. That may provide us some modest pre-investment opportunities, but it won't be in the tune of, you know, seven hundred thousand or one point two. Now, that will not be the picture. So this is the, this is what I could do between basically last, uh, you know, last week when it happened and now. I offer it to the board for consideration.
Okay, well, this is something that we can all look through and shoot through, because obviously, we don't really remember until. Action and all that. Yeah. So, so you have anything to say?
I'll start. I really dislike the removal of the counselor and the math. I can kind of live with everything else, but I really, really, really would like to see if there's a way that we can bring back those two positions. I think that those are really important positions. I think coming out of COVID. I think if we are going to reduce the social studies position, we kind of need the school counselor to take over the skills for adolescents class. Because otherwise, do we have, so out of the two counselors, Dr. Willett, right now, one of them is teaching that class? Or there were, there are three, though, because of the grant at the moment?
At this point, we would have to go back to the drawing board and figure out.
So I'm concerned about that because I think that the class is important. Um. I'd like to see, um. I guess out of all the maintenance office, is that out of the repairs and maintenance line, Dr. Willett? That all those like.
Yeah, man, these are different code lines, but roughly, yes. I mean, it's repair, it's the tech services, it's equipment. It's all in all those categories that you kind of see here.
So can we find some more of those?
Yeah, I definitely.
I mean, this really was, the problem that you're facing is that you're starting to get to a place here where we were years ago, where if we start taking away, you know, the things that help you save money, you know, these kinds of things offset the cost of big impacts if things fail. So a lot of times in municipal other budgeting, you'll say, you know what, just wait till the water fully fits. Just wait, because then you can just buy the new water. The problem is, you know, you, it blows up and it blows a lot of other stuff with it, and it takes a lot more to repair at that point, much more than if you had just done preventative. Maybe it's sort of you've done the other, the other work. I have talked to all, this is the result of conversations with virtually every administrator. So this is not, you know, and, and this is the third cycle of it. So, uh, you're not, we're not going to find, you know, when we say we're going to find something, you're not going to find something without sacrificing something else. We're borrowing from the future at this point. If we do, you know, do slice away at something, we're actually slicing away at a future board's ability to deal with something at a lower cost than it's dealing with it right now. So that's the problem, whether it's, you know.
Have we talked further with the insurance company? Because if we've got, let's just say for argument's sake, we currently have twenty-two open positions. Let's just say we bring that down to ten. The insurance number must have those ten vacant positions built into it.
We have, uh, we've gone through a few cycles of them. And so the insurance amount there that we have taken is what we have agreed to take through conversations with Lockton and the town. They're in the month, and I think now we've, we have actually, um, we're, we're lower than twenty-two at this point. I think we're getting closer to ten or maybe at this point, you know, I, I'm confident by next year began, we'll have built them. We also are going to have to consider, if you have a doubling of special ed populations, you're going to need paras, you know, ZIPs, you're going to require things. And so some of these people may, we may have to shift some kind of positions towards services in that manner. You can pretty much expect that is going to be a reality for us. You know, the number has doubled. It's almost thirty percent of the entire population of the K-two group, three K-two. So there is no way we are not going to need our workforce. And, and right now, I had a meeting with the Paris this afternoon, and they reiterated that. They're overwhelmed. They need more people. Um, we are going to fill these because it's going to become a necessity under, you know, what we, what we have to comply with probably and everything else. So, um, to, to go back to that, we've, we've done those conversations, and I did try, and I don't think there's any more flexibility there. But we have to work through, uh, flowers.
All right, um, I'll yield the board.
All right, um, let's go to Florida, then we'll go to Toby. Court?
Thank you. Um, I want to see the math coach added back in. I think there's been enough room in the salaries to add that back in. As far as the counselor goes, I really want that, too, but I think, and don't quote me on this, but the legislation, um, that just passed at the state in their session that they just got out of, I think there's going to be a lot of grants, uh, that we can apply for, for some of these counselor positions. Maybe we could even have more than one. So that one, I'm not as worried about as I am as the math position. Uh, and then as far as the seventy-five thousand, um. For the autism training, as, and Dr. Willett, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The woman that provides the training is the founder of the CERTS program. And so looking at her program, it, it looks like she has resources that we could provide PD for a lot less than having the person, having her directly come in. Um, and I know that she's come in for the past couple of years, so maybe it's time to maybe have more train the trainer, uh, and do some of her online. Or maybe use somebody that, you know, didn't sign the program. I see that there's a lot of manuals online and stuff, too. So I don't know. I'm not like, everyone likes to point out, I'm not an expert, but that was just a, a, a point that I thought could be a potential reduction, uh, if they've had training on the program before. Uh, and then I'm going to bring it up because I don't see it on here. The non-certified salaries, I think there's forty or fifty thousand dollars there if we stated a two to three percent raise. That's all I got. Thanks.
Uh, just as a, just a thing, the seventy-five that's at the bottom, that's out. So we would have to pre-purchase that. So that's already gone. That's out of it with this number. And the other piece is, if you, you want a position, something has to come out of there, you know, and there's really not a lot to. So that, that's the thing, it's, uh, it's, it's going to have to slide. Something has to be compromised for that. Um, so, that's all. But that seventy-five is out. The autism, what, what, one thing to keep in mind about this is that when we do do the training, part of the obligation of the district, when we are in hearings, is to demonstrate that we have ongoing, regular training and, you know, that our people are able to deliver services and have been trained. So if we do end up in a hearing, they'll say, well, what are you doing to train your people in an ongoing manner? Are they getting coaching? Are they getting this? Are they getting that? If our answer isn't yes, then sometimes we can subject ourselves to potential additional placements that cost far, far more than the training that we are providing. So just tactically in this district, because it's, you know, it's, it's actually the right educational thing to do, too, of course. But, um, you don't want to be in a position where it looks like the district's not doing ongoing training for its people and life skills, AKA, you know, autism services, because that compromises your ability during a hearing to show that your people are well-trained and are executing their professional duties in a manner that helps the kids. If you lose that, uh, if they don't believe that, then you end up without this. And, and that's, we've done, I think, in this district, a very good job of managing that. That's part of why. So I would like to try to get some of that back in pre- purchase. But right now, that is out.
And I think, Dr. Willett, you made a, a good point just a few minutes ago. Until, you know, next week, we really don't know for certain if, if this is enough or if we're going to get even more of a, a fiscal mandate, you know, to do more with less. I'm just a little bit curious, um, and I paraphrase, when you started this budget or this agenda item, you said something about that it was difficult to find reductions in the areas of programs, hence we look towards these other, what, what did you mean by?
Programs don't have, personnel is the, the big chunk of your budget, right, our budget. So, um, programs are, when you have, uh, say, a program like World Languages, the textbooks, right? You're not going to make up three hundred, two thousand dollars from, say, you know, World Languages or textbook. And if you did, you would wipe out and you would still not get everything. You have to wipe out a lot of program stuff, which would impact what the kids receive. So it wouldn't be advisable, say, to wipe out all of your sense textbooks, all of your math, whatever, because then you're dealing with this, then the kids don't have the program materials, they don't have the notebooks, right? So you can't really, and it doesn't add up to enough. So we've made program reductions, and this is like the third cycle of reductions, but you can't get to three oh two with program reductions without pretty much deeply hurting, and you still wouldn't get, and, and that's really where I'm trying to, you know, trying to dig a little bit, is to make sure. So we've looked through, by, by, we, I mean, your staff, uh, have looked through and made sure that, you know, we're, we're pretty much at that line. If we start digging into programs anymore, we're going to see effects where it counts on the kids. Yeah, and, and it works in a way that these all are used at developmental levels that kids, you know, uh, need them. So the various names these things have are plugged in to the grade and developmental level of the kids. So you may see a lot of names, you know, you see a lot of program names, but they are applied towards those grades. And if you take a piece out of the puzzle, it's like the Jenga thing, you know, or whatever, the tower, that, that could collapse a program like our learning lab. And that affects the kids.
And, and thank you, that helps clear. For future reference, you know, when we go through this, you know, the next part, it may be beneficial to see that puzzle. I mean, most like we did when we did the, uh, the rounds, and your staff did an amazing job with the reading and showing us how this one led to this one, or led to this one. Seeing the rest of that picture clarifies us kind of.
Absolutely, and I think we will get now, coming out of COVID, an opportunity to continue some of those that were very useful.
So, not surprisingly, my first priority is this full council position, whereas it has to be the largest dollar amount up there. I just can't see how we're not adding more counselors right now, so it's actually really heartbreaking for me. I know, so I know, um, as Christina brought up, that, you know, we've all been advised about, um, the, the grants as well, mental health. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but I've had opportunities like that come up in the past. Do you foresee that as being, as being a good or even a decent possibility that we will be able to get something like a school counselor?
Well, and, and as we sent out a little bit of information on state legislature's movement on the mental health, so there, there's some possibilities there. I will aggressively pursue anything I can to get that, uh, because, and I have in the past, you know, the position was there because of the grant we pursued. And we will continue to aggressively pursue anything that opens up that would allow us to do that.
Would that be something that could occur before the next full year?
I don't know for sure, and I, I wouldn't promise that.
I don't even, I don't even know how to bring this up, so I'm just the newbie in here. Uh, so there, the discussion in the town council meeting, um, was cut short. There was a suggestion thrown on the table by one counselor moving some things out of the capital budget if possible. I mean, I would rather a school counselor than a dishwasher. Do we have, have any means of doing that? Is that any possibility? Would that have to be a discussion that was had with them first?
Well, your ERF can cover special ed, you know, capital or technology. What happens with ERF is you're, usually you're covering up an item, program, that's not something you have to continue forever for. Personnel number you have to carry. So like, you might be able to take and offset some things with ERF, uh, some special ed, transportation or whatever. That may be carried the next year, may not. It may just be a blip in the year and so on. An added position, you will carry that. So, well, no, so you're very, a good, great question. To give you, try to give an example of what you did. You guys did take money out of the ERF for the technology, physical items. And you expend them, then in the future, you may have, now that will cover you for that year, it's physical items. You, you don't necessarily have to terminate a position in that situation. In this case, you're, you would add a position instead of those physical items. Does that make sense? So it's a little bit harder to do something like, if you offset and put a position in, that's going to haunt you next year. It's, it'll come back at you again. You'll have to find money.
But I have a quick question, because when we took the money out of the technology piece, I mean, we were pretty low where we wanted to be to begin with, right? Well, what do we?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's ideal because the technology that we already planned on taking out of the ERF, that's, or that's basically a recurring expense. So we're going to already have to figure out how to put that in. And kind of, I know what you're saying, because I was at that meeting. I think.
Council Murray.
Right.
Council Murray, right, and Council of Us, suggestions, we're both similar.
I think the issue with that is, especially with our capital budget that was already approved, we don't want the council to now start turning back our capital budget requests, because they can say, well, you have the E R F, you can pay for the dishwasher yourself. Because the math just will eat up our E R F. And in my opinion, the E R F really, again, I don't love that we had to take it out for the, the technology. And my suggestion is we don't ever want to do that again. This was, but the rest of that E R F is really our significant emergency fund. Like, that is when we are desperate and we've got special ed costs that are just way more than we ever could imagine. That's kind of our fallback, that we know that we have that, because it started, well, it's, we don't want to go to the town and say, we blew our budget, we don't have our savings. You need to throw a life raft. That's not, that doesn't look good if we do do that. I, I would think it would have to be something like so significant for us to do that, so.
Like an outplacement, sort of?
Yeah, I guess like the twenty outplacements that all of a sudden just came here, and we were like, oh my gosh, we don't even have enough E R F money to cover that. So while I, I know what Ms. Murray was getting at, but I think that would set up that precedence if we started taking stuff that, especially if the councils have already approved to come out of our capital budget, and now we have to paper out of our, our E R F, even though technically it's allowed. I just, I don't think that's the way we want to go. And I, I think, at least at their meeting, she kind of said that in the height of emotion, but I know, I don't think, at least Dr. Willett, that he was aware that that was something that, that was ever a possibility, nor I know, I don't think it was ever brought to the board. So I think while I understood what she was saying, I would have been against her, her counterproposal, if you will. I don't think that would have been the best for us in the long run for that, but I, I, yeah, I know what you're saying, because it would be nice if we don't have to even look at, you know, some of this stuff. So it's a tough one. It really is. It's a, it's a tough situation, I think, for us at this point.
Let's go to Gina, who has one up.
Yeah, Jen just asked, the second, the second, or second question was, my first question was, why don't we just swap it with something that we don't see as being as necessary right now? But, so that answer helps. I just think there's, there's not many words to describe seeing those top four items being proposed to be taken off the budget. If you go look at our history numbers and then our math numbers, they're two different things. And that's, right now, it seems like we're favoring the math, and so history, I, I, I don't know, I don't know where I stand, but I do know that seeing those top four items on that list, it, it concerns many here where every study possible suggests we need more counselors in schools, we take one, we remove one.
Or is that a new hand or an old?
Yeah, it's a new hand. A couple of things. I'm I'm a hard no on this list. And you guys know me, I, I like low budgets, it's just my thing, but the math coach, like seriously, if we gave our non-certified employees a more conservative two to three percent raise, you can have the math teacher. The school counselor position, and I don't know if Griffin would agree with me on this, but I'm gonna throw it out there. Could we hire someone through the E R F in anticipation of applying for grants to keep that position going? You know, just for this one year, and we'd have to be transparent about what we were doing with that employee, but I don't see any reason to not keep those two positions.
But you're, you know, I, I understand, and I think everybody's thoughts here have great value, where you're trying very hard to do some really noble and important work. You know, I don't think you, you have enough in non-cert to do, to do, things we can look at it. I think the issue here is you have never, you have not tried to fund a position through some abstraction of your E R F in the past.
But I don't think it would follow underneath the special ed or capital technology.
Right, like, you know, you, you could try to say, but you've noticed that you, you have utilized the E R F tops of your budget, you've done it for technology. It, it also covers overages in special education, but it was not designed to, to, to provide the carrying of staff. It was not set up for that. And as much as I would like to see that happen, that is not how this was set up, and I think that explicitly was set up to not do that.
Which is fair. I, I know it, it's not, I was thinking, it's, it's a counselor, not special ed, I was mixing that up. But I do think that we could at least look into some of the new resources that just passed, but I, I'm still a hard no on the, the math. I think we could, I think we could still keep it in there.
I mean, we threw out, or I threw out, I should say, nobody really said about the, the salary float from last time, that, you know, we know things are gonna happen throughout the year. Either there's gonna be another retirement, not every position will get filled, some things might change. I mean, I still, so Christina, just to kind of play off what you were saying, that to me would be a better spot to take our chance with the counselor position, put a negative hundred thousand dollars within the salary line item, knowing that there's a real possibility, we're never going to expend the full salary line item, because we never have in seven years. Except for one year, I believe. Now, that could backfire. That could absolutely backfire, but to your credit, if we put the counselor or the math position in there, and then we found a grant to cover the counselor, otherwise we would be then, at the end of the year, we would be scrambling that we would have to, if every position got filled and we had no, I don't want to use the word cushion, but I'm gonna use the word cushion, if we have no cushion in the salary line item, then that would be a lesson learned that we're gonna now have to figure it out in some other line items that maybe we have an expense. And it's hard, it's hard to make that call now for what's gonna happen a year from now, where we're gonna be with our numbers. But I'm not against that. I can see why Dr. Willett was, but but, yeah, I, I do, I, I'm definitely having a hard time with those two positions, and, you know, I just and I, I get what you're saying too, with the, with like the salaries. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, it, it's tough. Like, can we have a three percent pool anybody that's not under a union contract? Can we have a three percent pool and Dr. Willett can decide who gets what? You know, we're not gonna say who deserves more or less, whatever. But I think a three percent pool for any of our employees, that is, in, right now, a, a good, a good race. I don't think, yeah, I, I would have been happy with that. I know I didn't get that, so. But I think that, I think that that's fair in the, the times that we're in. And that's, that is something that I think we do need to consider.
What's, really, what do you mean by the three percent?
So a pool is basically, if your salary, certified salary, so for example, are two million dollars, you take three percent of the two million, you take all those employees and you decide who gets what. Some might get more, some might get less, it might go based on their reviews, their ratings, their, you know, what, so that's, I think that's pretty, that's more typical, I think, in corporations do it that way, but you know, it's just so hard. It's hard to then, you know, possibly be taking away, you know, important things to the student. So it, it's just, it's hard all around, but I think that unfortunately, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions.
Yeah, and this is, once again, this is just throwing around the ideas, and we have time, we still have to have the referendum, and then we have to go there. I know Dana has her hand up, and she has not spoken yet, so go ahead, Dana.
Thanks, Ashley. Yeah, I've been pretty quiet tonight, because I'm, I don't know, I, when I was reading this document, it was just, it's a tough pill to swallow, right? It's, we're trying to make lemonade without lemons, you know. You know, we're seeing the special ed seventy-five thousand on the bottom, and those four, you know, personnel that we needed in specific areas in respective schools to assist in our recovery and growth of the school system. It's disheartening. I don't have an answer. I, I, I feel like we, this is, I don't know, my third, fourth budget cycle, right, third or fourth budget cycle, and it seems like every time we just get tighter and tighter and tighter, and think we're gonna find something somewhere, but I feel like each year over year, we're, we're, we're finding efficiencies somewhere, we're reallocating something somewhere, we talk about getting a grant and for that, and I, and I appreciate the creativity of, of doing that, but we also can't have a position hoping that we can get a grant on something. We can't budget that way. It's not, you know, I, 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 I don't want those positions eliminated, and I hear what Dr. Willett is saying, and unfortunately, again, I've been pretty quiet tonight, because I don't have any answer. I feel like, you know, we're dogtied, you know. But those are areas that I think would be, and I don't want to sound dramatic by saying detrimental, but it is it is something that is going to hurt the integrity of our classrooms and our students and our staff, especially coming out of COVID. And I get it, everybody's had tumultuous several years, we've all gone through it in different capacities, and we need to be cognizant of everybody, but I think we need to be cognizant of our, of our staff that is overextended and our staff. You know, any of our essential workers across all industries are suffering as well, as well as, you know, our youth that is looking to, you know, I mean, I listened to, I wish I was there tonight to, to see those, the, the, the young adults that were in that room and receiving their awards, because those folks are the ones that, that, that need these things, and need these resources. So although I don't have an answer, I'm hoping that, Dr. Willett, sometimes somehow you always pull a rabbit out of a hat, I don't know how you do it, but I feel like you're running out of rabbits. I mean, I, I just don't know what else to say. I'm just disheartened. That's, that's it.
Yeah, just, real quick, you know, listening to, to everybody's talking and looking up, and you know, to, you know, emotionally seeing those up there is, is disheartening, no concern. But when we start, we, we've got to be careful not to convince ourselves that this lower budget or this, this request from the, the referendum to reduce is a one-time thing, and then it's going to go back up. My, my fear is that we're very soon going to have to figure out how to do more with less, because the money's just not gonna come the way it used to. I start getting concerned when we're looking for creative ways to pay for what's going to be recovering costs. Because, you know, like you see, you, you may find money under the couch cushions this time, but you're not gonna find it the next time, and we're kicking that can down the road to what becomes an even bigger issue. Also not overly comfortable, you know, when we start talking about the grants, and while Dr. Willett and his staff have historically been very good at, at getting money for grants and doing some amazing things based on those grant proposals, and I applaud them all, it is not a guarantee. And going in and making obligations based on hopes create some challenges and some, some questions that happen at the end. If we don't end up above, if our hopes don't pan out, and we sit at the end of the cycle below, then the question becomes also, when we start looking at Ms. Griffin, I recognize what you were saying as far as the, the, the fluff that's potentially in some of these budgets, and, and can we bet on those futures? Can we, can we bet on the fact that we're not going to hire these? And my question then becomes, if we honestly believe that one of those line items is high enough that we can hedge a bet on that overage, then it's not the appropriate number in there for a moment. So if we're budgeting that much slop that we can then write, I think we've got some budget issues that we need to look at. So it, it ultimately goes back to something I think Dr. Willett said, you know, ultimately, it's dollars. We've got X number of dollars, which is just under four hundred thousand less than we expected. And if we want to pay for these up here, then it's gotta come from somewhere. We, we just don't have it. And again, this potentially not being a one-time thing, I'm incredibly hesitant to pay for these with our savings.
Well, at this point, I think I should conclude our budget conversation, since it's all just ideas and thoughts that are put out there, and we don't really know, we don't have any action going forward. So, once again, these documents can be out there and we can keep on reviewing and do. So at that point, let's go ahead and move on to policy ten eighty.
We'll try to talk through it by just using the screens, so that I'm sensitive to what people can see here. So it'll take me a second to load it. So, policy ten eighty, for the people that are scrolling around at home. Right, this is our, in the first read zone, not interaction zone. So this is essentially, there are a couple of pauses tonight that we're just doing some housekeeping on and cleaning up. You'll notice that the yellow, you can't always see yellow at home if you see a printed version, so I also made it italics and strikeout.
Need to share your screen, because it's not coming up online, so that would be, that'd be great.
Okay, so back to, just to kind of circle back. So, you know, there's a couple of housekeeping ones we're doing for tonight, policy ten eighty, visitors in schools. Yellow is the add, the blue is the takeaway, also strikeout, and yellow is in italics in case you can't see the colors. Essentially, we're adding, and Chippin and Goodman has a model policy. So we're adding paragraphs that are recommended by the model policy into our existing visitor policy. You can see that essentially it just addresses Nexus situations. These are typically when you have a D C F or summer referral, and the Nexus district is determined to be, say, tolerant, you, you have to, you know, do certain things and have kids in your system, even if certain people who are grannies don't live there. Also, visitors and observers, it just gives an overall statement about the security procedures, you know, that they must prominently display, and display their badges, et cetera, et cetera, to cover the bases. So again, it's housekeeping, it's really just updating to what Chippin and Goodman recommends. And you'll notice that the legal references are also updated for twenty eighteen. And so this is a first read, it's available, for those of you at home, it's in the packet, it's also available to the board. It'll be the packet or the, or the and I can move to the next one if you'd like.
So I just, when when it says that it's guidelines regarding independent educational evaluations, I guess one of the things I think about is the evaluations that you can request to have done, like in five oh four I E P kind of circumstances. Does this limit the availability for parents to bring in evaluators in those cases? Like, I just?
Yeah, a case by case doesn't limit. However, there is always, it has to always go through a principal, and if you're requested of a principal, and the principal follows our process for it. You cannot have someone in a classroom who might disrupt this classroom environment, and there's also privacy issues with respect to children. So, you know, that's why people just can't come off the streets and sit in a classroom, because somebody might, you know, have an unfortunate day, some other people might have some issues, so people generally, you know, can't just come in and do that. So you'd have to have a specific purpose authorized for that. If I P P T, if somebody's brought in, and it's an agreed-upon situation, that person, you know, would become a visitor and come. But that would have to be agreed upon, I P P T, it would also have to be authorized by the principal, and, you know, that type of thing.
So?
So it doesn't do anything really different than what we do now, but we don't just, we don't allow just anybody in that either.
No, I, I completely recognize that.
Wouldn't really fundamentally change it, it just cleans up, you know, some of the language with respect to we utilize security systems. So it wouldn't really fundamentally change it, it just cleans up, you know, some of the language with respect to we utilize security systems. People have to expect that they're gonna be subject to our security procedures. You know, not all of these types of things were as adamantly stated in the past, and, and that's why it's an update to that policy. You'll see in the next ones, they also say, you know, health and safety, because you may end up having to require some kind of safety thing that the state's issued, required, all of that type of thing. So no, it won't really fundamentally change any operational thing we do now with respect to that statement.
That, that was my concern. I, I wouldn't want to change anything that would make that any further from parents than it already is.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, let's see, none. We can move on to fifty forty, fifty forty one.
All right. So this one is essentially, um, again, first read, but what's happening here is there were two separate policies, um, and so these have been merged into one. And essentially, uh, fifty forty one was, was simply a video camera on a bus policy, and so there's already a bus policy, so we just merged these into one and included the language of the cameras into, uh, the language of the overall transportation policy. So it's a consolidation, and most places that I looked don't have those two things separately. That was an artifact of a long time ago. So, you know, you'll notice that this is very similar, if not exact, to this, you know, tran- to the transportation policy we have posted with the yellow ads or the blue strikes. And it essentially takes the section on bus cameras that was for, for some reason, and it's entirely separate policy, and incorporates it into fifty four.
Minus T.
Yeah, and it updates us from tape, since we generally don't use tape anywhere anymore. Um, and use video file, now we might have to put some message on that.
Still use tape. Yeah, I did find that one.
You know, we don't, yeah, Betas, eight tracks and all that.
We still have a policy.
Being checked, we're not doing that. So it, it essentially, uh, it is, the, the purpose is to make it cleaner, put it into the existing transportation policy and get rid of fifty forty one accordingly. So that's.
Okay, hold on. So you're consolidating? And so you're keeping fifty forty, because the, it just kind of, the way that you had it on top, the seventy fifty forty and fifty forty one into new fifty forty one, then you have elimination of policy.
Yeah, sorry, that, that should be consolidation, it should, it's gonna be fifty forty.
Fifty forty.
Yeah.
It should be two votes.
Two votes.
Okay. Amending fifty forty, and then eliminating.
Any questions? Okay, let's move on to uh, ninety, ninety-one. Volunteers.
So, again, this is a similar thing, uh, housekeeping, again, this is first read. Uh, essentially updating this policy to be, uh, be consistent with the Chippin and Goodman model policy. If you take a look at it itself, you know, there's really one line added, and it has to do with their safety protocols because Chippin wanted to add safety protocols and screenings to the explicit language of the policy in case the board ever needs to do that, which we have, because that was the whole hope, so that's why those are in there now, updated.
Okay, any questions? Nope. Okay, let's move on to fifty ten.
All right, so this one, um, although I will give accolades to our, our staff, this one is essentially giving a quick update to our student attendance insurance policy. We did update this not so long ago, but the new thing really after COVID is chronic absenteeism. So Chippin added some legal references here and, um, explicitly, uh, wants or in general explicitly names chronic absenteeism in their communications. And it is, um, one of the things that, uh, has been a big after effect of COVID is that, um, chronic absenteeism, you know, getting children back to school in their, their used to being remote. It's also called school avoidance. We've seen much more of that. So the policy isn't just truancy, it's updating to address this chronic absenteeism and to address school avoidance, which were not explicitly part of it before, but now are a part of the landscape. Um, so that's really all that's happening here, it's just updating to use that terminology and to update the public acts that were part of, um, you know, the last couple of years in between now and the last time we did it. That also codifies really what we're doing. We have to do that anyway, but it puts it in writing.
It was thing to remember here is, you know, directly underneath our policies, then the district has their regulations that they develop. So what this does is add those in there and provide that umbrella so that our public staff can then go and develop those, the lower level regulations and actually implement it.
Any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for updating some policies for speedings, and then, uh, next for me, you know, we will hold on. Okay, um, go to committee and layers on reports, so. Can't remember who met and who hasn't. Um, I've obviously did not meet, because that's coming up. Mental health, did you guys end up meeting? Because I noticed that a meeting was canceled.
We canceled. The budget. Oh, that's right, that's right.
Trying to think. Um, Dana, I don't think there's anything for Birch Grove, right? I don't think I saw any Birch Grove minutes. Communications.
So we didn't, we, uh, we haven't met since the last meeting, right?
I don't think so, I don't think, I don't think anybody has met, right? And I'm not sure, I think curriculum met that, like, that night of the meeting, so I don't think that they met, so go ahead.
Why, new PTO update?
Oh, okay, PTO update.
Um, Dr. Willett, have you seen the book vending machine at TIS?
I was sent texts of this book machine.
Someone sent me a video of it.
I did.
Video too, but I wasn't able to play that for some reason, but I did get, yeah, so I've seen this impressive.
Very cool.
Can we, like, somehow put it up on the screen?
I know, I, when I sent it, I was gonna say, maybe we can have it on the screen, but, um, of course, my son looked at it in middle school and said, oh, I want one of those, he said, but with candy. There's already candy vending machine. Anyway, I didn't know though if you knew, because Tepso didn't. Do you know what, um, I know it's at TIS right now, it's going to be brought into BGP under, um, I think the one book that.
Yeah, one, yeah.
Um, do you know what they're using as an incentive for the tokens? Yeah, they didn't, I didn't know if you did.
I don't, I don't. I'm gonna go there Friday, though.
I wonder if it's an X amount of hot cards or?
Find that out, yeah, try to learn some tokens.
Yeah.
The little Birch Grovers love to get the little, what is it, evil cards? What, what is it?
Gold.
They are, yeah, they're, um, oh my god.
Mr. Swanson, you so interesting.
Grow cards. Grow cards, thank you. Some of the little ones right now.
We're all like, I can't remember.
For TIS, yeah. Um, much more exciting, I think, as a grow card, but TIS has cooler stuff to win, like kissing a pig, remember when the principals had to kiss a pig? They never kissed that pig, Violet of Love. Anyway, so, I'm sorry.
That's in a minute.
The Birch Grove Book Fair is scheduled, um, so it's, it's scheduled for May thirteenth through the twentieth. There's a sign up, it's, it's all over the place on Facebook, it's on every, it's on Tepso's site, it's on every parent's website. They do still need help, so if you have a chance to look at it, please do so. Um, they are having their spring ice cream social and basket giveaway next Friday, the twentieth, um, in the Birch Grove CAF. And their staff appreciation event, um, for Birch is on five twenty-five. Um, I don't have a lot from the TMSPO, PTO, um, but I do know that eighth grade promotion signs are gonna be available for sale soon. Uh, Talend High School's, um, senior banners and graduation lawn signs, the order date is May thirteenth, so we're coming up on that. Um, banner inside pickup, May twenty-fifth, completed banners due Monday, June twentieth. Yesterday's food truck event was a big success, so a big thank you to everyone who came out for that, and they're going to do another one on May twenty-third. Um, there's also, they're doing a self-defense class, um, to the, offered to the community, Saturday, June fourth, from nine thirty to twelve thirty, and that's forty dollars for THS. And then the Booster Club is doing a meet and greet, because they really need new members, um, June sixth, in the THS library. And then another reminder that the annual evil scramble has been scheduled for Sunday, September twenty-fifth at one PM.
And for that book fair, there might be, um, uh, exciting visitor that might pop in, possibly, I scheduled.
I think that's a great idea. I would also like you to count change from the kindergartners, so.
I'm there to serve.
And if he does, and I happen to be there, I will do it.
And then we can play it on the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, I, like I said, there's no one else that I'm missing, I believe that there's nothing else that has happened, so, okay. Sure, personal part on, on board action, let's move to flexibilities, extensions for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
Sure. So we've actually talked about this quite a bit, um, over time. And, um, what has happened recently is the state of Connecticut, um, has extended the state board of that, what's called the EES through the, um, Connecticut State Board of Education. And now the state, Connecticut Department of Education, um, has extended to school districts the ability to extend flexibilities into the twenty-two, twenty-three year. In addition to that, it looks like in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, they're going to update and replace the Connecticut Guidelines for Education Evaluation. Now, I know that all these years get a little confusing, so the document in force prior to flexibilities, um, from the state was the Connecticut Guidelines for Education Evaluation. Our evaluation plans were based on the Connecticut Guidelines for, um, Educated Evaluation twenty seventeen. Our latest version of that prior to the pandemic was August twenty nineteen. When the pandemic hit, you may recall that the Board of Education, the state offered, um, flexibilities instead. And so the board endorsed flexibilities, and then the PDEC and everybody worked on it, implemented flexibilities in that first COVID year. It extended that into the next COVID year, but it added summatives, that was a good act, in my opinion. And now that ended the, you know, next COVID year, which is now. It has now further extended it into the next coming, uh, year. And it has extended it, as far as anyone can tell, in its current form with a summative. So that means that we would basically just take what we were doing now with some cleaning up tweaks of paperwork that, you know, we've learned, why use two forms and use one? You know, there's some housekeeping, but no fundamental change in how it's basically done. Um, and we would continue the process we used this year into next year. So the board, in order for us to do that, two things really have to happen. The board has to accept it, and PETA has to accept it. But there's no point in going through all the work with PETA to accept it if the board's not going to accept it, so this is the first stop on the train. Now, this would be different if fundamentally we're doing a lot of changes, because I would represent all the changes, but there's really no changes. This is the same plan that we did this year that would roll to next year. And the state has not offered any fundamental changes. And so that's where we are right now, is this is basically coming to you, uh, to either endorse or reject. If you endorse it, we continue to work with flexibilities, take some, you know, efficiency tweaks and, and work with it as we have. Um, and the benefit to that is because EES is likely to replace the guidelines that are enforced, you know, in the past with these, with new guidelines based on flexibilities, we will be a, you know, in the game. We will have already started the process of making adjustments, and they may make further tweaks, but at least they're we're making, they're making tweaks to something we've already been to some extent engaged in. So that's the benefit, and everybody kind of knows what they're doing. We would be able to roll into next year without a lot of chaos. If the board rejects it, which is the right of the board, uh, we would have to fall back to the August twenty nineteen plan, that's the alternative. That plan has many different pieces to it that have no relationship to what's coming. So, um, you know, everybody can do that, but we will basically be taking that, you know, we'll be sitting on the bench for a year when we could be engaged in something that we're gonna have to be adapting to anyway. So that's basically it. So the motion would be to approve the continued adoption, because it's basic, you know, the same thing, uh, about the Flexibilities Evaluation Plan, um, you know, this was for twenty-one, twenty-two, this is continuing that adoption to, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, so I just had a quick question on that, because I understand that it's for the, what we adopted for the twenty-one, twenty-two. But do you need to say anything about continuing it for the twenty-two?
Yeah, I would say tweaking this, the motion to approve the continued adoption of the Flexibilities Education Evaluation Plan uh, into the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, you know, um, or from the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, to into the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I would recommend is tweaking the way.
I will re, I can re.
Right, because the way it looks like it were.
Yeah.
Yes, the continuation for that plan, but it just doesn't, it doesn't really, well.
Yeah, motions. So I'm gonna, how about this motion to approve the continued adoption of the Flexibilities Education Evaluation Plan enforced in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Yeah, I mean, again, it's not Shakespeare, but it does. We'll kind of give it.
Excellent, just adds that to.
Yeah, it's motion to.
Thank you.
And I will, I'm gonna Wikipedia for this, I'll throw it up there so you have.
It's gonna show.
It's come.
A lot of clicking.
No pressure.
Don't forget that period at the end.
It's a tough room.
I'm gonna drag, there's so many steps when we're doing hybrid, all right, so I'm dragging this thing over. It'll be available momentarily in our hybrid. My cortisol's going up. Might have to file a worker's call.
Sorry.
Oh, Lord, okay.
Yes, so, not really, just a curiosity question, as far as what was adopted right before, so you said it, twenty?
August twenty nineteen, uh, an updated version of the plan, the rest base.
Concerning, uh, so we really only got, you know, a few months of that, and then the state came in afterwards and said, you know, with COVID and the, the flexible leases, so. Are you, is the district happy with what flexibility was and has become to the point that you're, you're happy going with it? Or were there things in that previous one that put talent in a better place?
Well, so the August twenty nineteen plan was an evolution of a, of a previous one. So we had been doing it for a while with a few added elements, so twenty nineteen was more of an update. Um, and we had, uh, you know, successfully applied to the state to try a few interesting things, and, and the state actually complimented us and rolled some of those interesting things, the flexibilities. So, um, so essentially, we've been doing it for a while. I don't think, uh, I think the teachers appreciate flexibilities, and I think they, the PDECs, you know, did endorse flexibilities, so I think PDEC, PDEC would also endorse it again, versus going back to. And I think they, the PDEC, so, you know, did endorse flexibilities. So I think PDEC, PDEC would also endorse it again versus going back to say August twenty nineteen. So I think there's a very high, if not percent probability, they will, after you've done it, endorse it and then off we go. And the thing about not endorsing it again, and just to, whether I like it or don't like it, this is what is here. E S is, this is, this kind of thing is what is going to be the new guidelines. So I, um, you know, there's parts of it I like, parts of it I don't like, but it's going to be largely relevant. The state is going to give us this and then we have to adapt to what the state provides, just like the twenty seventeen standards. There were some things I wasn't crazy about twenty seventeen and I would say probably some education weren't, but that's not, we don't get to decide that, you know, you can't say.
But I say, you know. And, and I, I understand where you're going and recognize the fact that, you know, in twenty twenty three, the state may come down and say, you're gonna do this and we pretty much just have to, have to adapt and do it. But if this was more difficult for your staff to implement, if this was not as beneficial for your, your teachers, your administration, then we don't have to just take it for the next year. So that's what I want to make sure.
PDEC will reject, right? And then if you reject it or PDEC rejects it, it can go, it goes back to ours. So PDEC also has to say, this is a mutually agreed upon type of thing. You're the first phase, because why bother otherwise?
But from the staff's perspective, you like this.
Yeah, and PDEC is the staff, PDEC has, that is a statutorily required committee of staff and, and so, and they have, they endorsed it in, in its, in its form. So that my guess is that it will be endorsed again without much trouble and frankly, with everything going on, this is the, this is what they know. You know, I don't think they, they wanna shift up everything again. I think this is what they know. I, I don't think there'll be a problem with this at all at PDEC. Um, like you said, we'll make a couple tweaks to paperwork, you know, but otherwise it's, it's, it's what they know.
So at this time, I'll entertain this, this motion that is up on the screen.
A move to approve the continued adoption of the Flexibilities Educator Evaluation Plan enforced in twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Jen Galant, she has second.
Perfect. Any other further discussion from board members? Anyone want to raise a hand or any other further questions? Not, we will just start off with a roll call vote. So let's go online, switching it up. So floor.
I.
Yeah.
Bye.
Tony.
Hi.
Hi.
Galant.
Hi.
My eye as well, therefore this passes unanimously of the flexibility plan. Sorry, gone. Okay. So let's move to public participation. So at this time, um, well, room is cleared out of people. So if anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand and just take your name and address and just needs to pertain to our agenda. Going once, going twice. Okay, we will close that out. So let's open up the points of information for any board members. Um, anyone like anything to say? Oh, Dana, you look like you're raising your physical yet.
Sorry, I'm using a different computer tonight and I am struggling to find the hand. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, Ashley and the team tonight, I think you guys did a great job with the students, um, recognizing and doing the photo and, and, um, making such an inclusive and rewarding environment. So I wish I was there, but, uh, great job to the team tonight. I think it meant a lot, um, to our young, our young adults.
I absolutely loved that. It was, it was a lot of fun. I love starting with you like that.
I just wanted, you know, like Dr. Willet said earlier, I recognize you guys are having conversations with the, the best company as far as what we, or what, what things we can recoup, you know, what level of expectations contractual versus what we're seeing. You know, as the, as, as the parent standing at the end of the driveway knowing my kid's gonna get dropped anywhere in a plus or minus thirty minute window. Or it, it's just not overly comforting right now. So I'm, I'm glad that we're in some level looking at that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, let's go ahead and I'll entertain the motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourners.
Okay, any discussion? At least have a roll call vote.
I, I.
Give a thumbs up, Dana. See, uh, there you go. You got that Lisa? We're all ready.